Todd, were we anticipating anybody being gone tonight for board members?
Not that I heard. Caitlin.
I have not heard of anyone not going to be here tonight.
You know Doc saw us late running from his appointment, so.
Okay, I have six o'clock, Todd. So I am going to call. Do you want to actually give your speech first before we get going?
Sure, I'll give a few few details. You're welcome to our board meeting tonight. My name is Todd Schuman. I'm the village administrator. Just a few logistics for for you to be aware of. For those who are attending as public, just to know you're you're automatically muted, but there'll be a couple of times during the meeting when the public can participate and I'll be able to unmute you during that process. There's a public comment section included for any item, whether it's on the agenda or not. Those speaking are given two minutes per attendee. And also, there's a public hearing this evening and attendees are given three minutes to speak on item related to the public hearing. In both cases, public comments are the public hearing. Use the raise hand button on the bottom of your Zoom screen to let me know if you care to speak on those items. They'll show up in my screen in the order that they're raised. And then I can bring you in during those times. If anybody's participating by phone, star nine is the way to raise your hand. And then for the board members and those who are here presenting, remain muted unless you need to participate and also keep your camera muted as well, except for board members. And then all votes will be taken by roll call and just reminder to unmute when it's time to take the roll. So with that, there you go.
All right. Thank you, Todd. I'll also point out that I did put a battery in the clock that's behind me, so we actually can see what time it is now. So it didn't have a battery the last couple of meetings and somebody pointed it out to me. So we'll be able to keep track of us tonight. So all right, with that, I'm going to call the village board meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Nyla Frye here. Gary Hertzberg.
Here.
Erin Moran. Phil Random. Kristen Rungy.
Here.
Phil Williams.
Here.
Chris Zellner.
Here. All right. First item we have then is confirmation of open meeting compliance, public postings, official notices and online availability. Caitlin.
I can confirm that the draft agenda was published in the Wannakee Tribune on Thursday, February 25th. The final agenda was posted at all three village posting locations on February 25th and the packet was packet and agenda were made available online on February 25th.
Okay, thank you, Caitlin. I see that trustee Moran, I believe, has joined us. Is that correct, Erin?
Hi.
There you are. Okay, great. Welcome. Next, we have our consent agenda. Would anybody like anything pulled or I'd look for a motion?
I would approve of the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Phil Willam, second by Gary Hertzberg. Any other comments? Please raise your hand. Okay, seeing none, Caitlin roll call vote, please.
Nyla Frye. Welcome back to Nyla. Kristen Rungy.
Yes.
Chris Zellner.
Yes.
Phil Williams.
Yes.
Erin Moran.
Yes.
Gary Hertzberg.
Yes.
Nyla Frye.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have our public comment section for anybody who would like to make any comments on any items that are on or off the agenda. This is your time. If you would please raise your hand and Todd will bring you in for your comments.
Okay, I have Mary Heimbecker. Okay, go ahead, Mary.
My name is Mary Heimbecker, 306 West Third Street in Wannakee. I'm just commenting on the money for the chamber. I'd just like to say that I feel that the chamber does great things for the businesses here in town. I am concerned that during a pandemic, when people are struggling, I'm wondering if it's wise for us to give extra money above what we have earned on the room tax. Many of the events were canceled in 2020 already and what happened to the money we gave them last year that wasn't used on those events? I would think there should be money left over to fill what they would be doing this year from last year. That's just my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Todd.
Robert McPherson. Go ahead, Robert.
Good evening, Robert McPherson, 1703 Alexandria Court. I'm here to speak tonight about the session that the public was alerted to at the last meeting that this village board held where it went into closed session and they and the closed session was placed on Facebook and the Zoom meeting. To be quite frank, as a member of the public, I was disgusted to hear the comments from trustee Hertzberg, from trustee Williams and from trustee Random. It was a gross misuse of closed session in order to hide their true feelings about affordable housing in the village. Now, I'm not saying that either trustee or either any of the three trustees that I've named would overtly be discriminatory towards those that make less money than them or that are of a different race or ethnicity or sex, or if they have children. But what I am pointing out is that it is violation of the Fair Housing Act to make policy that explicitly discriminates against families with children. And we heard repeatedly in these discussions that with no evidence to prove it, that these will be somehow more unsafe because children will live there. It is disgusting to constantly hear the village board state, we support affordable housing only to turn around in a closed session and to make comments that completely contradict that stance. Not only do they contradict that stance in private, but then the actions that they take in private session with their votes, which generally have no explanation, but we got a good look at it last during the last meeting. Pretty much prove that there is a clear part of this board that does not want to see affordable housing in Wannakee. It's time to stop making excuses. The Housing Task Force gave recommendations. The CDA gave recommendations. The Plan Commission has approved these things. Not the final plan for Cohen Ezra before you say technically yes, but they've all given their approval. It's really time for us to be serious about affordable housing in Wannakee and to stop taking these cowardly approaches and making these statements in private session. Thank you.
Okay, Todd, anyone else?
I'm watching the attendee list. I don't see any hands at the moment.
Okay, I'll give it three more seconds. Okay, seeing none, I am going to move on with our agenda. Next, we have presentations. Discuss and take action on proclamation honoring Natalie Drazen of the Wannakee Food Pantry. So I believe Natalie's here. She's smiling on our screen, so I know she's there. Todd, does she have audio?
She Natalie, you're welcome to pop into the to the meeting now if you want to turn on your camera.
Hello.
Hello. And most importantly, we wish we were in person to be able to do this versus on the Zoom and hopefully that'll be soon here that we can do that. But we are here tonight to honor Natalie, who's retiring as director of Wannakee Food Pantry after 20 years of service to the organization. The proclamation recognizes and honors Natalie for her dedication and hard work to the Wannakee Food Pantry. So what I would look for first is a motion from one of our board members to approve.
I would move we approve the public proclamation honoring Natalie Drazen.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Second by Bill Random. I saw his first and welcome tonight, Bill. And then last, we would have a roll call vote, please. Go ahead.
Kristen Rungy.
Yes.
Phil Random.
Yes.
Chris Zellner.
Yes.
Phil Williams.
Yes.
Erin Moran.
Yes.
Gary Hertzberg.
Yes.
Nyla Frye.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Thank you, board members. And so I have a proclamation of appreciation for Natalie Drazen. Whereas Natalie Drazen has been an invaluable member of the Wannakee Ecumenical Board and the Wannakee Food Pantry for over 20 years. And whereas as food board, food pantry director, Natalie Drazen has overseen the job of moving the food pantry three times, which included growing the food pantry from a food cupboard, food cupboard at St. John's Church to a modern food pantry connected to the Dane County Food Pantry neck network. And whereas Natalie Drazen has worked with hundreds of volunteers over the years, nurturing talent, allowing civic groups to run food drives and encouraging creative help from the young and old alike to ensure the successful operation of the food pantry. And whereas Natalie Drazen worked tirelessly to meet the growing needs of community families with respect and dignity. And whereas Natalie Drazen experienced leadership, integrity and wisdom have earned her the respect and gratitude of the village of Wannakee and the Wannakee community. And whereas the village board and the residents of the village of Wannakee benefited tremendously from Natalie Drazen's diligence, resourcefulness and commitment. Now therefore be it resolved that the village board of the village of Wannakee extends its sincere and heartfelt appreciation to Natalie Drazen and hereby commends her for her dedication and outstanding service to the Wannakee Food Pantry and wishes her well in the future endeavors. Let this resolution be entered into and made part of the permanent records of the village of Wannakee and let a suitable copy be presented to Natalie Drazen, passed and adopted on this first day of March 2021. Congratulations, Natalie, and thank you for all your hard work. Do you have any comments you'd like to make?
Thank you so much. That was very unexpected and not what I was expecting to be happening here this evening. So I'm very appreciative that what has been, you know, grown in the Wannakee Food Pantry has been recognized, but you know, it's you know, just not one person that can do all of that, everything that has happened and grown with respect to the people that we've been able to serve and help in our community can't happen without hundreds and hundreds of volunteers. So and that that goes to also just kind of recognize all of those that have made donations to the food pantry. Again, we can't do what we do without the help of our community and you live in a really great community and anytime ever that we have had a need for financial donations or anything, any food type items, all we do is put the word out and it comes in in droves. So it makes it easy to be in this position when we have such a great giving community. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, Natalie. I think a round of applause for Natalie is appropriate here from the board members. And I'm sure all the people that are in attendance tonight are also doing the same. So thank you for all your work over this time and we appreciate everything you've done.
Well.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Next, we have our public hearing and it's a public hearing and discussion action requests by University Avenue Properties and Erdman Future, CSM and Rezone Property at South Division Street and Marshall Drive from I2 Industrial to Plant Unit Development, PUD to divide existing lot into three separate parcels. Todd or Kevin, I'm not sure who's introducing this.
I can introduce it, Chris.
Go ahead, Kevin.
Chris, before the public hearing, just to give you a little bit of background in the action that the plan commission is taking. The Plan Commission has recommended approval to the village board. And really, the purpose of this land division in Rezone is in order for Erdman to split up the lots and then let them function individually with a long-term potential of another business taking over the vacant building or the possibility of Dane Manufacturing growing to a point where they need the other building as well. So with that, the Plan Commission has has recommended approval. The reason there is some PUD zoning and not strict industrial zoning because there's this connection between the two buildings. They have this little clauseway that allows them to go back and forth. And I think that Dane Manufacturing long term will have a need for that and can repurpose that. And so that's one of the reasons why they want to have this. There are a number of technical issues that we continue to resolve, but that's on a later agenda in terms of the developers agreement. But again, the plan commissions recommend that approval and I think Brian and I would be available to respond to any comments or questions after the public hearing.
Okay, then it looks like we have a hand up already. Is Alan part of either Erdman or?
Yeah, he's with Erdman Holdings.
Okay, so I think what we'll do then is if Erdman wants to give a little presentation or if they want to make comments for regards to the project, that's perfect right now. And then we'll open up the public hearing after that.
Okay, and I also see representatives from Dane Manufacturing. I guess I would ask if they care to to also speak as part of introduction that they raise their hands and I can bring them in too. Okay?
Go ahead.
All right. I will start with Alan here. Well, I'll bring in both Alan and Troy. All right, you're both in.
Good evening.
Hello, Alan. We can hear you.
Okay, great. I'm not seeing myself, but that's okay. I'm not sure if I'm on screen and one of yours or not. In any event, yes, Alan Hemble, I'm the secretary and officer representing the manager Erdman Holdings of the two family applying for the subdivision. We were delighted to be in front of a number of you on the Plan Commission received your approval three weeks ago. We've made some substantial progress since then in resolving some of those issues. I sent a report forward on Friday. I've assembled our team. We have Mike Lawton, who is our PUD CSM Council and Robert Proctor and actually is available this evening if you need his. He's general counsel for us. Bruce Haller with Denofrio, our land surveyor. And Paul Schoen, myself, on behalf of the landowners applicant. And also would like to state that we are as landowner applicant in agreement with the motion on page 30 for the CSM and PUD. And we're also in agreement with the motion on page 133 in regard to the public improvement agreement and have as recently as Friday, just to continue our enthusiasm and help you all with the decision-making progress, submitted an updated draft of that improvement agreement. Because we felt it was in our best interest and yours to to show that kind of enthusiasm and support. So thank you. And we're here to answer questions when you need us.
Thank you, Alan. Troy, any comments?
Yeah, I'd just like to echo Alan's statements and want to thank the village and the planning commission for working through the challenging technical difficulties of kind of unwinding 75 years of the urban companies buildings in this village. And the long heritage they've had with the village and the great relationship they've had. We we hope to pick up that baton and carry it forward and appreciate the Kevin and Wannakee Utilities along with all of Alan's professional staff and engineers at Denofrio to kind of try to identify and work through. You know, the water, the water mains, the the electric as well as the, you know, the stormwater runoff and whatnot that runs between the buildings as well as around the site. As those of you that live in the village like me, I live just outside by Kevin and Westport, but been in Westport, Wannakee for 25 years. Much like that symbiotic relationship between those two communities Erdman's had with Wannakee. So Dane is happy and excited to join the village. We're a 103-year-old company come with a rich, rich history and a rich heritage. I know there's a lot of people from Erdman's that are, we run across every day that are excited that the site's being reinvigorated. And we bring about 100 people strong to this facility and and hope to, you know, hope to double that over the next five to 10 years. So a lot of our customers are excited. We're moving into Wannakee from staying local to the area. And we're excited for the for the growth and the opportunity that the village and this site will provide for us. So thanks for listening.
Thank you, Troy. Okay, so then it is 6:18. I am going to open up the public hearing for anyone who would like to address the board on this issue.
And Chris, I think I'm gonna Alan and Troy, I'm gonna keep you guys in here. You can click mute though. You can mute your audio. That way, if there's questions that you'll be able to answer, you'll be ready to to tackle those. So with that, I'll bring in Kevin Tebrick. Okay, Kevin.
Hi, I'm Kevin Tebrick with Scientific Protein Labs. We are adjacent to the property and we have an easement that runs through the property. We're working on agreements right now to make that work for everyone. I had a long discussion today with Mike and I don't know how to pronounce it. Is it Lysol? The president of Dane County Manufacturing and we're getting along great. We're going to be, you know, great partners next door to one another, working through this. So we're very excited to have them there and SPL continues to to support them as they move ahead.
Hey, thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Next, Todd.
Okay, I am watching for, there's no hands raised at the moment, Chris.
Okay, we'll just give it a few more seconds for anybody else who'd like to make a comment. Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close our public hearing and open it up for board members. If you have comments and or questions, please raise your hand. Okay. All right, seeing none, I'll just make a comment that the the Plan Commission looked at this and we're very excited to have Dane Manufacturing moving into our community. Very good company, been around for a long time. And we want to be welcoming to them. And this was something that was more of a utilities issue and power issue really with the split of the buildings, making sure that we could accommodate everything moving forward. Also providing with some flexibility. So I will make the motion to approve this. And do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I have a second from Kristen Rungy. Go ahead.
There are two motions in the packet for this item, so I'm not sure which motion.
Okay, I'll, I'll I'll get there. So, okay, so the first was motion to approve the CSM to the subject to all outstanding staff concerns being addressed to the satisfaction of village engineer and utilities manager. Kristen, are you good with that for your second?
Yes.
Any other comments? Okay, seeing no hands, roll call vote, please.
Phil Random.
Yes.
Chris Zellner.
Yes.
Phil Williams.
Yes.
Erin Moran.
Yes.
Gary Hertzberg.
Yes.
Nyla Frye.
Yes.
Kristen Rungy.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And then I'll make the motion to approve the Rezone to PUD subject to all outstanding staff concerns being addressed to the satisfaction of the village engineer and utilities manager. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Kristen Rungy. Any other comments? Please raise your hand. Okay, seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Chris Zellner.
Yes.
Phil Williams.
Yes.
Erin Moran.
Yes.
Gary Hertzberg.
Yes.
Nyla Frye.
Yes.
Kristen Rungy.
Yes.
Phil Rand.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you. Next on our new business and thank you, Ellen and Troy for being here for those questions during the public hearing section. Next, we have discuss and take action on public improvements agreement with University Avenue Properties and Erdman Future. Kevin?
I was going to, but then Brian just popped green, so he said he would take this one. So go ahead, Brian.
So if you kind of skip ahead in your packet to page 133, there is a public improvements agreements between the village and University Avenue Properties and Erdman Future. And and I think that you all kind of touched on this on the previous agenda item. There are some utility issues that we are working through. And in fact, the agreement acknowledges that once the study is done, there might not need to be public improvements that would be done. But effectively, what what's happened is we've taken our standard public improvements agreement that we would use for residential subdivisions. Village staff has worked with the prop with Erdman to kind of pare it down to try to address the possible public improvements and really our utility improvements that may relate to the property. Now that it's the one lot's going to be sold. And so essentially, that's what this is about. In case there are any public improvements that need to be installed, Urban would need to do it. We need to get a study done before that. The recommended motion is on page 133 of your packet. And I'm certainly willing to answer any questions. Board members, any questions for Brian? Please raise your hand. Okay, seeing none, I'd look for a motion.
I make a motion to approve the Erdman Public Improvement Agreement subject to the final revisions approval by the village engineer, utilities manager and village attorney.
Okay, we have a motion by Phil Williams. Do we have a second? Second by Gary Hertzberg? Okay, any other comments? Please raise your hand. Seeing none, Caitlin, roll call vote, please.
Phil Williams.
Yes.
Erin Moran.
Yes.
Gary Hertzberg.
Yes.
Kristen Rungy.
Yes.
Nyla Frye.
Yes.
Phil Random.
Yes.
Chris Zellner.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next, we have discussion update regarding COVID-19 pandemic. Todd?
One thing I'm going to do later this week is send the board and maybe even post to our social media, a presentation that was given at the Rotary Club this past Thursday. Phil, I'm not sure if you were you're in that meeting, but we had presentations there from Eric Plum from our library, Sue McDade from Community Services and Cindy Mosiman from the Senior Center. And I think if you had listened to that, you would come away being very proud at the way our departments and our staff have found new ways to serve our people as our public as best possible during during the COVID season here. So we record those meetings. So I'm going to put that out there so you can see it. I would encourage you to watch that sometime over the course of the next week or so. They gave a really good presentation on what they've had to do to keep things rolling. Phil, did you want to comment at all on what you heard the other night or the other day?
It was all positive. In fact, they just, Senior Center just served 177 meals at three degrees. Another drive-by event. And all the seniors have been loving it and we were the we're one of the the only center in Dane County that didn't miss a day in the COVID. Is that correct?
So very, very possibly, yeah. So watch for that. Also, last week I met with Navy specialist, a consultant to, you know, I don't want to jump the gun on this, but I want to be ready for when the day comes that we can be be back to in-person board meetings, if not other committee meetings. And what I'm anticipating is that having learned to some extent, the benefits of virtual meetings as well, we should be able to look to a hybrid model for coordinating public meetings going forward. So what I'm looking at, what I'm studying is is the is the technology that's going to be needed and some of the systems needed to make hybrid work both at our current facility, our current village hall, and perhaps with equipment that we could pick up and take with us to perhaps a new village hall someday. So that is something that staff is undertaking to be ready to move there when we're ready. And now I turn to Bill Random for him to tell us exactly when we'll be able to do that.
Well, I'll tell you, we are, the hospitals are starting to open up visitors, the pot, the the number of people in the hospital that are COVID involvement from 30 some at our hospital from 30 some last two weeks ago to five today. So things have changed and I suspect it'll be in the next couple of weeks that the whole we'll start talking about small groups in sessions. So.
Okay, thanks. Thanks.
Teachers are getting their shots this week, to be honest, tomorrow, actually. So the world is changing right now.
And I know we are working our way through some staff eligibility. In fact, Caitlin, just there's a process that we can go through to register municipal staff in order of qualifications. So we're we're in the midst of that. And we're going to be listening very attentively to to Public Health Department to be able to, you know, jump back in and be of greater service to the public. It has greatest service to the public as we can be as we proceed towards all the reopening. But happy to answer any questions on that.
Board members, any questions? Please raise your hand. Nyla.
Just want to let you know I want to get on on the phone. I'm having a lot of static.
Okay, is that your last four 7399?
7399, yes.
Okay, all right. Thanks, Nyla. I will bring you in by phone as well here.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I just want to. Okay, you're going to leave Zoom?
Yep.
Okay, okay.
Okay, then moving on to our next topic, we have updated discussion on. Okay, then moving on to our next topic, we have updated discussion on diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives.
And Chris, I just want to make sure I contest this with Nyla. Nyla, I see you just came off mute. Can I?
Yeah, it told me to. Should I go back on mute?
No, why don't you just stay like that if that's okay? If for some reason you do go to mute star nine would take you back off, but you can just sit tight like this. And I will. And I'm going to.
What should I do if I want to speak?
Just chime in.
Speak.
Okay.
Yep, I'm going to.
Thank you.
Okay, and then I'm just going to remove your your Zoom participation unless you want to hang up on your computer.
I already did.
Oh, okay. All right, very good. Thank you.
Okay, Todd, go ahead.
Oh, D I, the E I initiative. Sorry, I was caught off guard, making sure we had everything set for Nyla there. Well, we are in the midst of collecting public and people from the public to be involved in our community learning project. As of a week or so, maybe more ago, we already had 77 participants confirmed with a goal of of hitting our goal of 200 participants. I think that was a really good start after just like a week, if not less, of being open to involvement. So that that continues. And I think that's the that's the main point I wanted to make today, Chris.
Okay, I'll just also point out that I will be meeting later this week with Bill Krakenbush from the Ho-Chunk Nation to talk to that, talk to him about ways that we are going to be recognizing the Ho-Chunk Nation throughout this year and some ideas on what we can do during our Wannaboo celebration. Since Dr. Random just gave a little bit of a positive sign, we're moving towards that that event probably will take place. That's what I'm hoping for. But yes, we're going to be doing some different things with regards to the Ho-Chunk Nation and excited to be talking with them and and looking forward to talking to Bill. Okay, so any other comments, board members? Well, okay, we'll move on. Next, we have updated discussion regarding stolen auto, theft and auto burglary cases in the village of Wannakee. And I think I saw Adam. There he is. In to me. So Adam, are we turning this over to you or is there anybody else introducing Todd? Are you introducing or anything or just going right there?
Yep, go ahead, Adam.
Go ahead, Adam.
Yeah, just give a give a brief update. Gary had reached out a few weeks ago. Many of you probably saw on the news that the city of Madison was having quite a few cases going on and and I don't want to say severe, they're all severe cases, but specifically carjackings where people are, you know, we're pulling people out of cars and then taking their cars and he had asked if I would come on here and give you guys a little brief update on where we're at here in Wannakee and what we're seeing. And then you know, just a reminder on some things that we can do to try and prevent these things from happening. So in 2021 so far, we have three stolen auto cases. One of those cases involved three vehicles from one resident and that was in early January. A second one involved an actual smashed out window in the afternoon, which is pretty unusual for what we have seen around here. Really, we haven't seen a lot of forced entry into vehicles. This was the rare case that so they had smashed a window out. And then we actually had one this afternoon at about 3:30 where somebody left their garage door open and for around an hour and somebody entered the residence and took a car. So not off to the greatest start here in 2021 compared to 2020. But, you know, we've we've had success in our investigations in these cases. We continue to be very aggressive in our investigations with them and very successful, but they do take some time. Additionally, we've had two burglaries so far in 2021 and then we've had six theft from auto cases that are kind of tied to this group and you know, really what happens is we'll we'll go a long period of time and we won't, we won't see any. And then one night they'll come in and we'll have a stolen car, a burglary and a couple of, you know, cars that were rifled through. So you know, when I kind of put these numbers together, it may look like a lot of cases, but this all happened in four nights total. So, you know, we work very closely with all the surrounding agencies. We have a detective that pretty much is assigned to just these types of cases. They work with the city, you know, Sun Prairie, Middleton, you name it, because we're all really fighting the same battle. So again, the some of the unusual parts of this where these are starting to take place a little bit more during the daylight hours where typically we have been seeing it during the nighttime hours. We took a little bit of a different approach halfway through last year when we see a garage door open, you know, in the neighborhoods, we've been waking people up in the middle of the night saying, hey, can you close the garage door? Trying to help them out. Our burglaries were down a little bit last year. I think that's probably part of COVID, but I hope that that's part of our initiative as well. But you know, we still need to all do our part and we're trying to get people to close their doors, lock their doors. You know, suspicious activity seen in the neighborhood today. We had somebody call in some suspicious activity and when we were looking for that car or that suspicious activity, the stolen car came in. So people are doing that, just, you know, be vigilant in your neighborhoods and be a good neighbor. You know, if you see something, say something. If your neighbor's garage is open, knock on their door, give them a text message, remind them to close it and and lock up because I think that's really what this takes. If they're coming here and they're not being successful, hopefully they move on to a different community. Not that we want that to happen in a different community, but you know, hopefully they'll move on out of here. But when they're successful, that's that's typically when we see the continued return and and that's what we're trying to avoid. So that's really, really all I have. If you guys have some specific questions, I'm happy to answer them. But the biggest thing I wanted to get out is, you know, these are still really bad cases. We don't have anybody getting pulled out of a car physically or anything like that, like you're like you were, we were seeing in Madison or hearing about in Madison. Hopefully that doesn't happen here, but we definitely are still having some cases that we would we would like to stop from happening.
Okay, thanks, Adam. Board members, any questions for Adam? If you have one, please raise your hand.
I think Adam made a good point. I think as the weather gets nicer, you know, most people keep their garage doors closed in the winter. But as the weather gets nicer here, people have a tendency to let their garage doors open and that seems to be one of the new ways that they're, you know, getting into homes. So I think they got to be a little bit more vigilant on watching that.
Adam, so you mentioned we haven't had any carjackings in Wannakee, correct?
Correct, correct. We have not had anybody pulled out of a car physically or or anything of that nature here.
So what steps can people take to hopefully avoid a carjacking for themselves, whether they're in Wannakee or they're traveling to Madison, whatever that might be?
Well, from from physically getting pulled out, I mean, keep, I mean, locker, I guess if I was in my car, hopefully the doors are locked where they're not able to get in. I don't know the specifics of all those cases that are going on in other jurisdictions, just because, you know, we're paying attention to the ones that are really happening here. So the details of how they happen, whether it's in a parking lot at some of the stores and things like that, I'm not really sure, but it's but what we can do here is really just lock your doors, you know. As soon as you get out, lock your doors, keep your doors locked, keep valuables out of plain sight. That's another big one. I think that's probably what led to the smashed out window in the one car. There was a, there was a couple purses that were sitting in plain view right on the passenger seat and sometimes that's just a crime of opportunity, I think, for for folks where they're looking in the window and they see it there and how can they get at it? But really valuables out of plain sight, keep your valuables in your house. You know, not only do you want to close your garage door, but you should be locking your service door from your house into your garage because we, you know, we see a lot of people stealing garage door openers or they're using garage door openers from unlocked vehicles to get into the garage. And then if they can get into the garage and they get into the house where the keys sometimes are, you know, in a drop zone right next to the door, that's where that's how a lot of these are being taken as well. So just a double check, you know, have a nighttime routine, have a daytime routine. You know, Gary mentioned that you know, the weather gets nicer, we leave the doors open and we are having a conversation today. And I said, I live on a corner lot and I'm like, I put a garage door opener in my pocket when I'm snow blowing and shoveling. So when I go around the corner, I can close my garage door and really the same should be for mowing lawn. And it's, it's kind of unfortunate that we live in a world where that's happening, but you know, we all have to take steps to kind of help fight this and and that's what we need to do right now.
So I'll just get tack on the word awareness, just for always being aware of your surroundings and what's going on around you, whether you're in a mall parking lot, wherever it is, making sure you're paying attention to things that are going on at all times. Same thing at your house, being aware of whether your garage doors up or your doors are locked. So thank you for sharing, Adam. And can you share, Adam? I know we've got a sheet that showed what our statistics were from compared to our surrounding communities with this. Can you maybe share that with the public a little bit? Trying to.
You're catching me off, you're catching me off guard because I don't have it up. But we did, we did put out our annual report. You can find it on our on our website. It's on our Facebook page. But our burglaries from last year, from the year before, were down 30%. So our burglaries did drop last year, I think from 20 to 14 in a year. And I think we had four stolen auto reports, if I remember right, from the year prior. So we are seeing our crime statistics, they were, they were dropping last year. You know, I had a kind of a brief text message conversation with Todd and about, you know, is it going to stay that way? Is that COVID related? You know, is that just they were unsuccessful? People were unsuccessful when they were coming here to commit those crimes so that we had fewer of those cases. You know, I'm a little disappointed in the start of the year, the way this is going now. I'm hoping we can kind of nip this in the butt early and and hopefully have a good summer where these aren't happening very frequently. But, you know, we definitely were in a good spot. At the end of last year, we hope we can count it, we can continue that. You know, in addition to that, our violent crime, you know, obviously we're not a place that sees a lot of murder, which is good or rape. I think our aggravated assault cases were down, which is tends to be your more, you know, violent physical acts. And and really, I think the plus side of all those, even for cases, you know, we were clearing and solving, we call them clearances. 80% of those, the other 20% of those, we we identified and sent charges in every one of those cases. They just weren't necessarily charged on from the district attorney's office for a number of reasons. Sometimes that involves unwilling victim or, you know, things have changed dynamically within the family and they're getting other services. But we have a very, very high success rate of at least solving them when they do happen, but those numbers remain pretty low. And I think Wannakee remains a very safe place.
Tremendous. Thank you, Adam, for sharing all that information with us and the public. I appreciate all you and your cohorts too for our community. So thank you. Okay, next we have our discussing take action on 2020 budget shortfall and room tax revenue and impact on Wannakee Chamber of Commerce annual payment. Todd, are you introducing?
Yeah, I'll take team with Renee and I kind of start out, want to start out maybe with a question for for you, Chris, or to lob it to you briefly. So after we presented budget information this prior year, Renee and I indicated what was looking to be the outcome from our room tax and the established agreement that identifies a proportional share of that room tax going to support the work of the chamber. After that was presented, Chris, if you recall, you you approached me and said, Todd, what our annual contribution has been 10,000 a year for quite a few years and you said, what, what can we do to sustain that? And I remember you telling me that it wasn't about necessarily. Well, I mean, it helps the chamber, but your focus was the fact that the chambers serve our businesses who've been hurting. Do you want to? Do you want to talk about why you brought that up with me?
Yeah, that's exactly right. So the chamber has a function that we've been partnering with them for many, many years to help our business community to thrive in all different ways. In addition to not just the businesses, but the businesses helping out the community for all the events that we have. The chamber being part, part of all those, whether it be Wannafest to Oktoberfest, all of those, the chamber is actively involved in those events and planning those as well as, you know, Light the Night for Santa, all the different things that go on, the chambers involved in. And we've, we've partnered with them as a village for many of these and their budget, obviously with this, with businesses, the businesses aren't able to give as much. I know that from a fundraising standpoint, there's just not the dollars that are there. So part of that is the chamber and what they receive. So I think Mary mentioned and Mary brought up a good point, you know, that the chamber received revenue, that's right. And a lot of the revenues, just like the rest of our clubs are derived from those events that they didn't have last year, whether it was Wannafest or Oktoberfest. Those are fundraising events for all of those different entities. The chamber is one of those. And so the fact that they were hurt with this, I felt that it's important that we keep as close to whatever we could for what we normally would give them as possible. So that would be where my background is on that.
Yeah. And one thing I would share too, and you know this, Chris, is that this, this was not asked for by the chamber. I want to be really clear about that, that that they didn't, they didn't come and say, they didn't ask us to make them all. They understood the agreement as it existed. Understood the, you know, sort of the risk that came with it in that, in that if room tax revenues fall short. But this was something that you felt really strong about, Chris. Frankly, I agree with you. And I know Renee is prepared to share with the board exactly how financially we can approach this year, this year.
Yeah, so I think everybody knows that we collect room tax from not only the Baymont, but we are starting to get little bits from some of our short term rentals. And the statutes require that we pay 70% of those receipts to our tourism for tourism development and promotion. And again, we have partnered with the chamber to do that and we have that agreement. And the agreement has been in effect long before the statutes required certain things, but it kind of went together nicely. But during the pandemic, we have seen a dramatic decrease in our room tax revenue. We had budgeted 2020 to take in about 18,000 in room tax and we only got what did I say? Just, just under 3,800. So well below what we had anticipated. And when we take 70% of that, which would be the minimum that we would have to pay the chamber, that's 2,640, which is about 7,000 less than we would normally give them. So in looking at that fund, so all the room tax has to be segregated in a separate fund in the and we do have some fund balance from prior years of about 25,000 that is there and can only be used, well, primarily for for tourism. That's what we've always used it for. And so we could make up the difference by spending down some of that fund balance.
I think I would add Renee that we we expect that fund balance is going to come down because there are other functions in how we make use of room tax. For example, the nice flowers along Main Street, which aren't cheap, but they're really enjoyed. That that's one of the sources for funding some projects like that. So we expect to draw on that balance, right?
Right. And there's also some grants that we give, like, for example, to the Schumacher Farm. Sometimes we give certain grants for certain programs that comes out of that. And that comes out of the village's 30% share. So I do feel like we will spend down some of that in 2021, just for commitments that we've already made. But we're, even if we did all of this, we would still have over 12,000 in fund balance by the end of the year. And that's kind of assuming that we don't take in any room tax during 2021. I'm hopeful that we will take in some as things start to turn around a little bit. And in currently the Baymont, one reason why we are not receiving as much is that they have not for profits that are taking a lot of their rooms and they are not subject to the room tax. So where they may be taking, having a lot of customers or clients there, we don't always get the room tax for that if they're not for profits.
Gary, go ahead. You're muted.
I was surprised when I was talking to Chief Kreisman about, you know, just some of the issues we just talked about. I said, you know, where is most of the crime happening in Wannakee? And he said, you know, by far the Baymont was their number one location where they spent most of their time. And so I'm looking at this going, what's going on up there? And now I understand we don't collect any room tax anymore. So it's a little concerning to me. Right. They have, they have long term agreements currently with some not for profits to house people there. And they they have produced that agreement or the the exemption to me. And they don't have to submit. They don't have to do sales tax or anything. So this, you know, they're not remitting tax to the state either for those, those people that are housed there.
Other board members, comments, questions? Erin, go ahead.
Just a comment and I'll make the motion, but I think this is important for us to make up the balance for our contribution. Tourism, obviously very hard hit and I think it's easy to overlook the role the chamber plays in our tourism. You know, we have destination restaurants, breweries, shops. But I think that'll also be one of the ways that we make it out of the pandemic. So I will make the motion to approve use of the fund balance in the community betterment element fund to pay the $10,000 in 2021.
Okay, motion by Erin Moran.
I'll second that.
Okay. Second by Kristen Rungy. Any other comments? Bill, you look like you wanted to make one.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Nyla.
Okay, okay. My idea is, is that, you know, if we My idea is, is that, you know, if we, if we use these funds now and for some reason, instead of moving forward, forward with COVID, things slide back and then we don't have room funds coming in. We have taken out of the thirty percent of our funds that we use for Schumacher Farm and flowers and things like that for the following year. So I don't know if it's wise to use the funds that we have in this way. That's just what's going through my mind.
Okay.
I think to your comment, Nyla, it's a good one. What I would say is if another year occurs like this one, the thought of being able to do this same action to fulfill an obligation of this amount to the chamber in 2022, I think would be difficult while at the same time fulfilling the other project commitments that we've talked about. So I think one fair thing for the village to share with Chamber is that if we're in the same situation next year, this may be a little more difficult. So it's kind of like a, sort of a, you know, maybe be ready or be alert to that scenario.
But at the same time, should we give the total amount? Could we cut, cut the contribution down?
That is definitely something that the village board could consider, yes.
So thanks, Nyla. Go ahead. There's a motion and a second. Do you have any other comments?
No, did Gary have something?
Go ahead, Gary.
Yeah, I had a resident reached out to me and also, you know, made some comments that basically made some sense and said, hey, you know what, our parks, you know, rely on revenue from park shelter rentals and all the things that happened through COVID. I mean, everybody's short on their budget. I probably would support this motion because I think the businesses really need it right now more than ever. And I think the chambers has done a great job. I'd want to know from Baymont in the next month, what is your commitment to these arrangements that you have? And when will you start actually having a room tax? So we can look at our budgets coming in, you know, and we can't wait till November to figure this out. We gotta know in, you know, in March or June that, that, you know what, Baymont's got this continuing situation for the next two years, and we're not going to get any room tax. Because then we're going to have to think of another way that we fund the chamber. So I'd like to find that out.
And we can definitely talk to Baymont. Obviously, the mechanism is a simple formula established by statutes and their ordinance. So that there isn't a lot of magic per se. But if we can, if Renee and I can get a sense, an expectation from the Baymont on what they're going to expect in the following twelve months, we will, we will budget, we will address that budgetarily and then have to make adjustments within other elements of our budget to accommodate, to address it.
Okay, Phil, did you have any comments?
Uh, no, we have a business right next door to that. And we know they're housing homeless people. There's been some issues, but it's, it's been resolved. It's getting better. I think that once COVID has passed us, they'll start renting out their rooms again. I think Madison is working on their homeless issue, and that's where a lot of the people are coming from for here. And I think we have to help them. But I don't know how long Baymont will have to go with that. But right now, they seem to be handling their issues. They're, they're keeping the property clean. They're, they're doing their job. It's just unfortunate they're not getting taxes from it. It's all nonprofits that are renting out for people.
Okay, so I, I think, I don't want to veer off the topic too much, and I get what you guys are saying. And really, it comes down to is, do we want to support the chamber with what their programs are for this year? Helping the business community, helping the community as a whole. They have scholarship programs that they give out to students. I mean, there's all kinds of things that the chamber is involved in. So we've got a motion and a second. Those are my comments. Any others at this point? Nyla, do you have any more?
No.
Okay, because you, I can't see you. That's why I'm asking. And then Kristen?
I know.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a comment. I, obviously I fully support this because I second it. One of the few things that government can do when we're hit with hard times is help their economic base get along. We can't bring customers back downtown on, on our own. We can't, you know, help businesses in a whole lot of ways, but we can do at least this. So that the chamber that is there promoting our community and helping, helping those businesses that provide these essential amenities. We all like the restaurants, and we like the outdoor dining, we like the festivals and the things that they put on, they fully support. They've been there for us, this business community has been, and I'd like to see us be there for them when they need us right now.
Okay, thanks for the comments. All right, I think that's everyone. So I'm going to call for vote. Caitlin, roll call vote, please.
Erin Moran.
Yes.
Gary Hertzberg.
Yes.
Nyla Fry.
Yes.
Kristen Rungy.
Yes.
Bill Random.
Yes.
Chris Donner.
Yes.
Bill Williams.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have discuss and take action on Wannakee Food Pantry proposed lease for a portion, a portion of the old library located at seven ten South Street. Todd?
And Brian's going to join me in talking about this. With direction of the village board, Brian and I assembled a draft lease agreement. We worked with some staff. I also sought some guidance, Chris, from you with some parameters that might be appropriate. And we've got that draft. We've presented it to the, the food pantry. I believe that draft was in the packet, and am I, I correct on that?
Yes.
Yes.
What we presented, yep.
Yep, we have gotten some feedback from the food pantry. There are definitely some things that they'd like to see clarified, better understood. And what Brian and I think the board could consider this evening, if you're comfortable, is in fact approving the terms as we proposed, but granting approval authority to the village administrator and the village attorney in order to allow what may be some non-substantive modifications. Of course, if substantive modifications would come about with future continued dialogue with the food pantry, we would need to bring that back for the board to review again. But Brian, are you willing to touch on maybe some of the main parameters of our draft agreement?
Sure. I, I think, you know, the focus of the agreement is, well, it takes the same form that we had prepared it a while back with the Leap Academy. You know, one of the things that I think was important to the village staff is it was putting this together. For example, if you look at page one sixty-one of your packet, and that's page two of the lease. We understand that there's maybe a great chance, or maybe a very good chance, that Village Hall ultimately gets relocated to this property. And so we've drafted, drafted this in a way to make sure that the village is going to have flexibility if and when that happens. And that really kind of takes the form of, okay, what improvements would we want to be made to the property? And we need to have the flexibility to make those improvements and to basically dictate the time when those improvements would be made. You know, the, with, with the obvious understanding that if we have a lease with the food pantry, that we're not going to be able to, we're not going to try to diminish the amount of square footage that they have at, at the property. Both parties would have the ability to terminate the lease entirely without cause with one year's notice. And again, that is primarily from the village's standpoint focused on, you know, what happens if we do a study and it determines that, yes, we are going to relocate Village Hall to this facility. And in fact, we're going to need the entire facility. We need the ability to do that since it's our building. And then, you know, I think those are kind of the big things. Right now, there is not a rent that is identified. There is identified on page three, the fact that a two hundred dollar a month payment would be made to the village for purposes of maintenance costs. And we've also tried to address utilities in the same way that we sought to address it with the Leap Academy, which is effectively, we kind of have a baseline, working with Renee and working with the utility and determining what the costs are when we're not in the building. And so essentially, that baseline is three hundred and thirty-five dollars a month. And so anything above that, the pantry would have to pay for. If, if we do relocate, and at some point in time in the future, the Village Hall is there and the food pantry is there, we're going to have to sit back down and talk to them and work out something different related to utilities because that three hundred and thirty-five dollar credit probably isn't going to make sense at that point. So those are the types of things I think that we've been thinking about. And that's essentially how we've built the agreements is to maintain flexibility for the village as we move forward. Okay.
I do, but, and I would add just, Chris, that I think the motion, I'll have to double check it. I believe it's written indicating that, I think it's next, next week perhaps, the school board is going to be meeting. The village did, as we did with the Leap Academy proposal, informed the district of the potential use and requested clarification on matters regarding the upper parking lot and the way in which the deed would impact the village's ability and rights to make use of the upper parking lot. So certainly, we want to make certain that that is clear, assuming it will be. Then I think we're in good shape in regards to parking. But we, we would want this made, approval of this made contingent on no issues in regards to the upper parking in terms of the deed with the school district.
So to be clear, with regards to the school, and I, I hope they go along with this and understand that this is the food pantry. We honored an individual for working in it twenty years, and this is a perfect location, centrally located within our community where the schools are located. And, you know, we're giving an opportunity because we have the ability to give that opportunity with our building right now. And I would hope that the school district would, would agree that this is something that's a betterment for the whole community right there. So hopefully, they'll, they'll agree to that. But I would agree with everything that Todd said right now. I'm excited that the food pantry has this opportunity with us, frankly. So we can give people the opportunity to help because they need it. There's people that need this help, obviously, with the growth that we've seen. So it's important for me, and I hope it's all important for all of you, and I'm, I'm pretty sure that it is. So with that, I'd look for a motion.
May I make a comment?
Sure, go ahead, Nyla.
When we were looking at renting to Leap Academy, when we were talking about maintenance, they said that perhaps changing a light bulb should be done by village staff because the village staff knows the buildings, they have the equipments and the staff that know how to do the changing of the light bulbs. I don't know if that should apply here or not, but I just wanted to bring it up.
Brian, that's probably one for you to answer. Yeah, I can take a look. I mean, the, the language that we have in this document regarding maintenance, I think is the exact same language that we had in the Leap Academy. I don't think that I changed that. But that's certainly something that we can work through. And if, if that is a concern for the Leap Academy, that, I'm not sorry, for the food pantry, it's something that we can, we can, we can, you know, update the lease if, if, if that's necessary. There is language. I'm, I'm just trying to find it right now. Starting on.
Page one sixty-seven.
Yep. We have language in there regarding maintenance and repairs. And so, for example, to your point, Nyla, right now, like routine maintenance that would affect our operations, that would be, you know, changing light bulbs. And so if there is a concern, for example, about the a tenant, in this case, the food pantry changing light bulbs, then for some reason, it's, it's something that should be done by, by the village staff. That's certainly something that we can, we can look into because we're, we're going to be there. I mean, for example, we're going to be plowing, we're going to be plowing, we're going to be doing the landscaping. We're, we're going to be maintaining all of the portions of the property that would not be subject to the lease. That's one of the things that we need to do with this document is we need to kind of more specifically identify what the quote-unquote premises will be. And that's the issue that you raised is certainly something that we can address with them as we walk through this.
The thing I'd add to that, I'd add to that, Nyla and Brian, is that one thing I've come to learn from, from the food pantry folks is that they've got a tremendous base of volunteers, volunteers who are, go beyond just being adept at collecting and handing out food items. But they've got people with special talents in terms of building maintenance, remodeling and so on. They've got, they've got some great folks lined up who really want to be, want to work to make this location their own. So there's going to be, I, I think there's room for collaboration and looking at their skills as well. But certainly, to the extent that liability is, is worth being concerned about and the long-term longevity of our facility, I think we can, we can work to balance that and come to agreement with the, with, with the food pantry on who should do what.
Okay, Todd, Brian, go ahead, Brian. Yeah, I was just, I'm hoping to get, if, I mean, if, if, if the motion, if someone's going to make the recommended motion in, in the packet that's going to give Todd and I some flexibility, I guess the one question I would have before that motion is made is, to what extent, if any, do you want to see a rental payment above and beyond the maintenance payment that we have in there and the utilities? Because if there is a desire to have an additional rental payment, that's something that we would need to address, and that's certainly substantive. So I'll give my opinion on this. Board members, you can give yours. Well, I'm just going to go around after I do. I don't usually go first, but I'm going to in this situation. I don't believe we need to charge a rent for this. This is for underprivileged and people who are in need. And I firmly believe that we don't need to charge for this. But we do need to at least recoup our costs of carrying the building at this point. But a rent, I'm not, I'm not in favor of a rent for it. But as Brian indicated already, we have a fee every month because sure, there's going to be a little wear and tear on the building as a result of this. We should recoup something to make those repairs if needed. My opinion. Gary, go ahead.
I would agree with you, Chris, that we need to recoup those costs. And as I drove by there today, it used to be the white wall, then it got to be the chalk wall. And now it's kind of a purple wall out in front that's a little gaudy. And it'd be great to see a mural there for the Wannakee Food Pantry because I think it would be a great marketing, educational thing for the whole community to have that right there on that wall.
Perfect. Thank you. Phil?
I like the idea of treating it kind of, kind of like a village department. And that means no rent. But they may, they do their share of the expenses.
Okay, Kristen?
I agree. I agree with Phil and you and Gary.
Okay, Dr. Random?
I agree. It's a great service to our community.
And Erin?
Yeah, I agree. I think that's appropriate to acknowledge, you know, we're going to charge them extra, we saw, but maintaining the building, you know, keeping up with that.
Okay, Brian, I think that was a pretty clear across the board.
Chris, I don't think you, Chris, you didn't send the rent question.
Oh, Nyla, I didn't, I didn't get that. Sorry, Nyla, I don't see you on there. I was doing my circle around the faces. So go ahead. There was no order, just who was on screen.
Okay, I, I agree, the idea with, like Gary has pertaining to the wall would be a, a great thing to do with that wall and to work toward getting that done, something to do with produce and food and things such as that. And I agree with the rest of you that this would be a great use for that space. And it'll be a good contribution for the village to, to have the space used, used in this way. And I'm hopeful that the school will join in so that this can occur. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so then, we have, do we have a motion?
I would like to move to authorize a village administrator and village attorney to finalize and execute the lease between the village and the Wannakee Food Pantry contingent upon the Wannakee School District waiving its rights to reclaim the upper parking during the lease period.
Okay, we have a motion by Phil and a second by Dr. Random. Before I call it a question, I see that Cassandra Punsle is online, and she is going to be the director here, I believe. So if, because Cass, do you have any comments you'd like to make quick, or is that inappropriate?
Well, I had had Cass is currently on board as their part-time executive director. But also with us here is Cheryl Gurman, who I've been working with closely over the, with the lease, Natalie, and then also Jennifer Kuscha from the W E B Board that oversee it. So I guess I would ask whether it's Cass or others.
Any others? Yes, my, my mistake. I just, I looked at our attendees off to the right and I saw her name first. So go ahead.
Does anybody representing the food pantry care to comment? There's Natalie.
Well, I would just say, thank you all for being supportive of the work that we're doing in our community by offering to work with us on lease. And this is going to just offer so much more for our community in the way of. food distribution, collaboration with the schools. It's, you know, I mean, the work that we do is clearly very important because, you know, we're helping to support, we're the food pantry is a safety net for our families in Wanakee. And when families in Wanakee succeed, then the, the community as a whole does. So it, it, this important work on being in a central location and, you know, very closely affiliated with the village, I think, just is a great collaboration. And we would, we are going to be excellent tenants. So I just want to rest a shirt on that.
Thank you, Natalie. Can tell you've done that for 20 years. So great job. Cheryl, I see you came on the screen. Go ahead.
I did. I don't have anything to add to that. We just appreciate your support and we're very, very excited to move on with this project. And prayers that the school district supports us as well.
Perfect. Okay.
I'd add, I've seen that they put some tape on the floor to sort of figure it out how it would work. It, it really, this really looks like it could serve all of you in the community so, so well. It, it's a great sort of alignment of stars as I see it.
Okay. Thank you guys so much for, for being here and, and sharing in this excitement for everyone here. So I will call to question, Caitlin, could you roll call vote please?
Carrie Hertzberg.
Yes.
Nyla Fry.
Yes.
Kristen Rungy.
Yes.
Bill Random.
Yes.
Chris Zellner.
Yes.
Bill Williams.
Yes.
Erin Moran.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Thank you. Thanks, everyone who was in attendance. Appreciate it. All right. Next, next on our agenda item is update on Cohen Esri multi-family housing project at 701 705 West Main Street. Brian, are you introducing this or who's introducing?
I, I'm certainly willing to, Todd, I'm not sure if you want me to go first because I know the agenda says that Cohen Esri may speak too. So I'm not sure if that's.
Well, let's have them first because I see Brian Sweeney's out there. So let's pull Brian in if he's so inclined.
Okay, I do have Brian in. Brian, did you, did you have anything that you're going to presenting visually? If so, I should promote you to panelist.
No.
Okay. All right. Then, then you're good to go.
Sure. Just want a couple of quick comments. Couple of weeks ago, we heard, you know, several concerns from the board members and I, I would, I would say probably the primary concern related to the safety and health relating to kids on the site. And, you know, we, we, we heard that and put our heads together and have come back with a couple of suggestions that I think will address it. Nothing's ever going to be a hundred percent, but just a couple of quick, you know, responses to the health and safety. We, we think something as simple as putting a three to four foot metal fence on the north side of the sidewalk between the building and, and between the building and the sidewalk. Right? So there would be absolutely no connection from the building to the street. I mean, that, that's, that's, that's our first thought. The second one, which you haven't seen the back of the building, we have a playground for kids. And the first site plan did not have it fenced. So we would just make sure that that is fenced for a separation from the parking lot. And for the safety, safety of, of those kids as well. So two thoughts. A third thought was if, if there are kids that end up on the sidewalk, we get really creative, maybe have some fun wayfinders. Right? Where obvious and fun way to go only one way, and that's to the stoplight and the crosswalk to, to, to cross. Children friendly, you know, you can do some fun stuff, paint safety messages on the sidewalk, et cetera. So just, just a couple of thoughts in, in, in that regard. Another question was design. So I would say beauty is in the eyes of the beholder in all things. And we've, we've heard some concerns and we are, we always have been and we are all ears as far as tweaking what folks have seen, the color, et cetera. So, you know, we'll have a next iteration next time you, you see us here. And, you know, there was a, a couple of comments regarding, you know, the, the bike path. It's a sidewalk, but a bike path that it could be widened. And, you know, it's nothing probably to be able to figure out today. But I heard, you know, connection to the conservancy in the future, et cetera. And one particular staff member suggested maybe there, there could be a, a small park dedication fee that we'd be willing to put toward you know, future solution, future options, I should say, to, you know, have the conservancy a little more access, et cetera. So, and I know there were other issues, parking count, ingress, egress, et cetera. And we are, you know, planning a plan commission meeting as well coming up. So we continue to have a conversation and make this building as drop dead gorgeous as it can be as, as close to a market rate building, something everyone in Wanakee and the community can be very proud of. So that's my update.
Thank you, Brian. Appreciate the update for this evening and for our call this last week. So appreciate that. Brian Kleinmeyer.
Yes. So I'm going to, I have a, I'll be as brief as I can and it will be pretty brief, but I got basically three things that I want to hit on. One is just real briefly, the discussion that we have with the developer following the February 15th meeting. Then I want to talk about some facts of what have hap, happened with this project over a number of months, years even. I'm going to address some claims that have been made on social media and earlier tonight at our meeting. I guess I want to say two things before I get started. First, I, I just, I'm not going to be advocating for or against anything related to Cohen Esri. I would just say that I've really enjoyed working with them. I, I haven't been as part of many, as many meetings as other people, but I found Brian and his team to be very responsive. And so don't take anything that I say tonight to be advocating for or against the project. I'm a little fired up, so I'm going to take a few deep breaths every once in a while. And I'll just let you know that right out of the gate. First, this project is going to be coming back to you. It's going to, as, as Brian just noted, it's going to be coming back to the plan commission for review and, and of the site plan. It's going to be coming back to the village board for further discussion on the TIF agreements. I, I, I know that it's definitely going to be on the April plan commission meeting. I'm not sure if there's going to be an update next Monday. I think you should expect to see it probably on your next village board meeting and, and probably in the first meeting in April. We've had discussions with the developer about kind of the critical path timeline. I think we have a good idea of what they need and, you know, what the discussions that village staff has had with them is, would be within the parameters of their critical path timeline. But, but that's kind of the, you know, that's the update there is it's, it's, it's more information will be coming to you for further consideration. So I don't know if you want me to kind of stop at each phase here, Chris, to try to answer any questions, but that's the first phase.
I think it's important that you point out with some of our conversations that we are operating within Cohen Esri's timeframe right now. With what, where our meetings are and the approvals that would need to take place for the project to before, we are operating within their timeframe. That was clear in our last meeting.
That is correct. Yep.
Okay. Any other questions for Brian at this point? Okay, Brian, go ahead.
Okay, so we've touched on this before. I'm going to, I'm just going to walk through some of the approvals that have already been provided to this project and the different meetings that we've had with them. I'm going to start with two plan commission meetings and then I'm going to move on to three village board meetings. The village has been working with Cohen Esri on this project for over a year. The first time that they were before the plan commission was at the November 11, 2019 plan commission meeting. As is the standard practice for the village, this was an initial consultation with the developer. Cohen Esri had materials within the packet. Brian made a presentation. He, it was a good presentation. He, and he made specific statements. I mean, we've known the entire time that this would be an affordable housing project. At, at the time that he spoke on the 19th, Brian was indicating to the plan commission their plans to make an application to WEDA. Obviously at later meetings, he was able to provide information about what, what had been granted by WEDA. If you go back and if you look at that meeting, a number of the issues that we've been talking about since 2019 started, you know, we're at that meeting. We talked about parking. We talked about traffic and access issues. There were specific discussion on whether or not it would, there would be potential to have a second access point through the Piggly, Piggly Wiggly land. And there was a lot of discussion about the look of the building. And, and I should step back and say, all of the meetings that I'm going to tell you about, all of these were open session meetings. There were no closed sessions. Fast forward to December 14th of 2020. So in between that period of time, Cohen Esri had made their application to WEDA and now Brian was able to make a presentation and talk to the plan commission about the project and indicate that they had received some funding from WEDA. So plan commission, six members of the plan commission were at this December 14, 2020 meeting. One person would have. Plan commission voted six to zero to recommend approval of the certified survey map of the project to the village board. Plan commission voted six to zero to approve the conditional use permit for the project that allows for the multifamily development on the property. Plan commission voted six, nothing to table the site plan. And so if you go back to that meeting, the reason why we tabled the site plan was because we knew that Cohen Esri had made a request for TIF assistance. Village staff was working with them. We had, village staff had a number of comments and things that we wanted to work through. And so the reason the table, the site plan discussion was if the village is going to provide TIF assistance, it is certainly reasonable for the village or any other municipality to say, hey, if we're going to pay you X number of dollars, we might want to see some changes to that site plan. And those aren't necessarily dollars that we're talking about. It's the project itself. And when a municipality provides funding, it gets to ask for those things if it wants to. At the, at the December 14th, 2020 plant commission meeting, we didn't know what the village board position would be on those different items and whether or not the village board would want anything and whether or not the village board might be willing to pay more money to get changes to the site plan. So the site plan was tabled. Notwithstanding that, there are a number of issues about the site plan that were discussed in open session. We discussed parking. We discussed the size of the lot and that was something that Cohen Esri wanted to talk about because between November of 2019 and December of 2020, they had acquired an option for the adjacent property. So their project site became much bigger, which I think helped with things like the park that they're talking about now. We talked about how the building looks. We talked about safety issues. There was a discussion about the need for a traffic impact analysis. There was a discussion about the need to contact the Department of Transportation to talk about the speed, not only the, the speed in front of the building, but the speed as people come into the village from the west as they're driving past the park and they're going past the new conservancy. So all of those issues were discussed in open session. And it was made very clear to the plan commission members and the public from the village staff's perspective that a lot of these site plan issues needed to go to the village board and we needed to discuss those items as terms and conditions to a TIF agreement because it may be that the village board might want to make changes to the site plan if it's going to provide financial assistance. So those are the two plan commission meetings that where we discussed the Cohen Esri project. We get to go even further back for the village board. The first time that this project came before the village board was April 16th of 2018. If you go back and look at that packet, there are materials from Cohen Esri in the packet as they relate to a zoning change to the property. A request had been made to change the zoning from C2 district to the C1 district. And that was important because in the C2 district, multifamily housing is not a permitted use or a conditional use. The multifamily housing is a conditional use in the C1 zoning district. So there was a lot of discussion at that meeting. There were a few comments made at the, the public hearing. I was there. I distinctly remember a member of the public talking about traffic safe and safety issues on this property as part of the public hearing. There was information from Cohen Esri in the packet. The village board voted seven to zero to rezone the land from C2 to C1 that ultimately was the first step in allowing this project to move forward. If you go, now you fast forward a year and a half, you get to November 16th, 2020. We had a discussion in open session about possibly providing TIF assistance for the Cohen Esri project. It was a good discussion. No decisions were made because the board members indicated that they needed more information. But they told village staff to go ahead and pursue this because the village board is interested in providing, potentially providing funding to this project, but the board wanted more information at that point. Now we go to February 1st, 2021. Cohen Esri was on the village board agenda for that meeting, but we didn't actually get to it because we had a long discussion about the TID2 extension resolution. That extension resolution had been on the prior village board agenda. You tabled it because you wanted more information. Well, at this meeting, you voted six to zero to approve the resolution extending TID2 for 12 months so that you can provide funding for affordable housing. We discussed at that meeting in length and at the prior meeting, what you can use that money for. And it can only be used for affordable housing or it's 75%, 25% can be used for housing stock. Six to zero was the vote by the village board to say, yeah, we want to grab some money that, under the state statutes and use it for affordable housing. My understanding is that that pool of money and Renee would have to correct him if I'm wrong, is somewhere between 400 and $450,000. So those are the meetings that I went back and looked at regarding this project, all of which were in open session. And so I'm certainly able to answer any questions that you might have about those meetings and the facts associated with those meetings.
Okay, board members, any questions for Brian? I just have one comment. I would, instead of using grab the money, I thought we were diverting those funds towards affordable housing. But that's the only correction I would make to that, but.
More appropriate statement. I would agree with that.
Okay. Board members, any questions for Brian with regards to what he just recapped for all of you? Things that probably all know already, but important for everyone else to hear and the public to hear. The process that has gone through, which is the proper process the entire way through. That said, Brian doesn't look like he has anybody else, so you can move on.
Okay. So I'm going to talk about two things that I've been made aware of and seen on social media. One relates to the Federal Fair Housing Act, and I will just tell you right now that the, the claims and allegations that have been made against the village board are unfounded. And I'm using that word because we are sitting in open session. If I was in a different situation, I would be using more colorful language. I'm not going to get into the weeds on this because it's unnecessary. There is no question that the Federal Fair Housing Act applies to municipalities like the village, local governmental entities like the village. And it prohibits us, for example, from making zoning or land use decisions that discriminate against people. But the fact of the matter is every single zoning and land use decision that the village board has made with respect to this project has approved the project. We approved the initial rezone. We have approved the conditional use permit. We have approved the certified survey map. There is no language in the Federal Fair Housing Act that requires a municipality to provide financial assistance to affordable housing project. And then you have to step back and understand that this, this money that we have adopted a statutory resolution to allow it to be utilized for affordable housing requires the money to be used for affordable housing. It is perfectly legitimate for the village board to evaluate, especially the first project, how much, if any, money it wants to provide for that project. Because necessarily if you provide X number of dollars for this project, that X number of dollars is not available for the next project. To state it differently, it would be irresponsible for the village to not go through the process that it has gone through at this point to make sure that it is properly funding an affordable housing project. Again, knowing that the money, no matter what, is going to go towards affordable housing. This is a main street. To suggest that people are taking inappropriate positions by looking out for the safety of children is ludicrous. If you listen to, I mean, obviously the information was made public that was going to be in closed session. What people have failed to state was any individual who had concerns regarding the children also had stated, I would love to see this project elsewhere in the village. This has nothing to do with wanting to avoid affordable housing projects that have children. If somebody wanted to avoid an affordable housing project with children, they wouldn't have voted for the TIF. have voted for the TIF extension resolution. These are legitimate concerns, legitimate concerns that have been voiced going all the way back to when the land was rezoned in 2018, discussed at the Plan Commission meeting at the initial consult in 2019. I so I'm just going to leave it at that. There is no basis for any type of fair housing claim. Every single land use and zoning decision that has been made by either the Plan Commission or the village board has approved this project. And I'll stop there on this issue if you'd like to ask any questions. Otherwise, I have one more.
Board members, any questions for Brian? Okay, seeing none, Brian, keep moving.
So the last issue relates to the open meetings law. And I'm just going to read something. I'm reading, I'm quoting the language in the statute that a lot, there's a number of different subsections that allow us to go into closed session. This is the one that was applied the other day. Deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. This is not just dollars. Now granted, only portion of the closed session meeting became public. The part where we were discussing dollars, and I'm certainly not going to identify what those dollars were, that was also discussed in closed session. It just so happens that the technical difficulties that we had didn't cover that portion. But the but the the reason to go into closed session is not just dollars. There are other terms and conditions. There are other things that we can request as part of a TIF agreement that may not be hard dollars, but it still is something that requires a closed session bargaining because we go into closed session to protect taxpayers. If we were not in closed session, yes, the public could hear that. And there might be things that the public would want to hear, but the other party also gets to hear that. And we can't have those discussions in open session or we have absolutely no legitimate basis to bargain with that other party because they're going to know exactly what our position is. Let me just, and so I'm going to give you a couple generalities. I'm not talking about Cohen Esri at this point. Then I'm going to address a couple of things specific to Cohen Esri. Lots of times in board meetings, whether it's Wanakee or it's other municipalities that I represent or my colleagues represent, you go into closed session and you have a discussion where multiple board members may say, look, we're willing to pay X number of dollars for a project. We're willing to pay them $500,000. But staff, we really want you to push hard and try to negotiate so that we can get something more around $400,000. Obviously, that has to happen in closed session. If that happens in open session, it does you no good. A village, a developer or the third party that hears that knows, I got $500,000 coming to me. It doesn't matter what village staff says. That same concept applies to other terms and conditions. You know, pu- public safety concerns, architectural concerns, things like, yeah, I'm willing to give X number of dollars for this project, but in order to do that, I need to see these changes made. We can't have those discussions in open session. They ultimately harm the taxpayer because the village board is looking to try to get the best project and product possible for the taxpayers, both from a aesthetic standpoint and from a dollar standpoint. And any parts of those conversations where we are having disagreement or you're providing guidance to staff on closed session terms and conditions, if that becomes made public, the developer knows it. The public knows it too, but the developer does, which completely cuts cuts out our legs when we're trying to negotiate the best possible deal for for the public. You know, the other thing that you might hear is people saying, I'm willing to pay X number of dollars for this. And that's, but if they're willing to make changes X, Y, and Z, I might be willing to pay more money. Again, we can't have the other party hear that. And it's not just dollars. It gets into other changes that you as a board may want to see to a project if you're going to provide funding to it. I always tell people, if you're a municipality and you want to have total control over something, you own it and you sell it. Okay? Other times, if you want some control of it, you're going to have to kick some money in. If you're not willing to put money on the table, then you're just left with whatever it is in your ordinances and you can't go above and buy it beyond your ordinances. And the other thing I would note is that everything that was discussed in the closed session that became public that seemed to have people upset because it's not strictly dollars, all of that stuff was already discussed in open session. Nothing is being hidden from the public. We've identified all of these issues. We've had these discussions with the developer. At the last meeting was the time for us at a staff level to figure out what, if anything, truly matters to the village board on whether on monetary issue or on a project related issue or on a public safety issue so that we could go back to them and try to negotiate the best possible deal for the village and its taxpayers. And if that information becomes made public, it necessarily hurts us. Now thankfully, you know, Brian made a number of comments earlier here. They they've heard those comments. They didn't have to wait for staff to come address them. They but now they're they're making some changes. Usually that doesn't happen the way that this play played out. But you know, it doesn't change the fact that we had a valid reason for going into closed session. I think that's that pretty much hits it. I just wanted to reiterate the fact that the items that were discussed in closed session, all of that was discussed in public in the other meetings that I mentioned. And so nothing was being held from the public withheld from the public.
Okay, board members, any comments or questions for Brian with regards to the project or any of the things that he's laid out in front of you tonight? Please raise your hand. Kristen.
Yeah, so I've been working with the village on housing since before I was accepted on the board. And I have at, and I just want to say, my personal experience has been at every single step of the way, the entire board and every member that's on the board now and was on the previous board that I work with has been unequivocally supportive of affordable housing and workforce housing at every step of the way. And the process that we've been going through, from my perspective, and I'm doing this with two other communities right now, every single T has been carefully crossed, every single I has been carefully dotted. There there has been every consideration for doing things properly, but also swiftly and also with the best public interest at mind, with the idea that we're going to be welcoming these projects into our community. So so when I go online and I see people framing this, otherwise, it's it's very frustrating for me personally. So Brian, thank you for outlining step by step everything that's happened along the way to make this project come together and the other projects that we've worked on. So other than that, I, you know, I really do hope that when people are writing things online that they're they're listening carefully to what's being said tonight and what Brian just said because I worry that the the naysayers, the people that are complaining about the process have not fully paid attention. And that is, and their spin on things, which is not connected to how things have actually unfolded, is polarizing and turns people off to projects like this that might otherwise be supporting projects like this. And so I very, very much worry that that rhetoric online is harmful to the idea of workforce housing in Wanakee, not because of the merits of the project, because there it scares people off from not wanting to have something that they're not understanding. And it's being framed just very, very differently on that page. So thank you, Brian. That's all I have.
Okay, Bill, I saw your hand up.
Well, I ruined a whole pack of three by five cards trying to get the right words out. So I thank Kristen, I thank Brian, and I actually thank the other Brian for putting things forward. I guess is, I don't know if this is the correct time, but I'm asking at some point if Kevin or the engineering staff, as far as the traffic speed there, but I really appreciate both Brian's and Kristen. So thank you very much.
Other board members, raise your hand. Phil.
Yeah, thank you. I I also am appalled by the social media attacks and an earlier attack at this meeting. But I was pleased to have a get a phone call from a representative from Cohen Esri this this week, and we spent about an hour on the phone. And he had listened to our session and he wanted to talk pleasantly about my safety issues that I had brought up. And we talked about the speed issue. We talked about the lack of a second entrance. We talked about the possibility of the Piggly Wiggly entrance. We talked about my my concern about the lack of parking. He thinks he's got it addressed. We talked about ways to safely get people in and out of there since there's not enough room on the highway there for a dedicated left turn like we have in a couple of other spots in Wanakee. We talked about the fact that two other apartment buildings in Wanakee have access to a stoplight in front of them and this one doesn't. We talked about the fact that one of them has a right turn in and a right turn out only, and this option is not available here. We talked about all these options. And I came away from it very pleased that I think the gentleman is going to work with us and help us move forward and have a safe project for the people that are going to be living there. And it removed a lot of my objections. And he acknowledged that he saw my objections as mostly safe and having people's safety in mind and not have anything to do with income levels crowded or anything else, just making it safe. So thank you for my opportunity to talk.
Thanks, Phil. Aaron, did you have any comments? I mean, I didn't get, I'm just going to have everybody comment. So go ahead, Aaron.
Um, just thank you, Brian, for laying it all out. And as Bill said, other Brian for joining us with an update. I think I very much want to echo what Kristen said at the end of her comments, like it's, I'm most concerned that some of the honest, like the polarizing back and forth on this is going to deter people from other projects in this community and not get, you know, the root of our concerns were safety. And I think it's it's frustrating that, you know, that's not people step back and realize like we're concerned about the safe someone's life here. And that's, it's very frustrating. So I just want to reiterate that.
Thanks, Aaron. Nyla, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to thank Phil for sharing the phone call that he had with the representative from Cohen Esri. It sounds like it was a positive call and it gave it clarified what Phil was thinking and it helped Cohen Esri come up with things to look at to make the plan better. It's always good to make a plan as good as you can. Thanks.
Thanks, Nyla. Gary.
Yeah, I think a couple of things. I think one of Bill's comments, I had talked to Chief Kreitzman and apparently they had, he had seen they had compiled traffic and accident statistics in the department, but he said he didn't see them, but they must be going to the state or someone who's asked for that traffic study, which is a good thing to, so that's in the process. I also had a talk with Brian and he was, I mean, just a great discussion with him about the project. I mean, we both had some some ideas that we thought would make it an improved project. I thought one thing maybe we could do is a around the backside of the Piggly Wiggly in the conservancy, build a path, you know, an elevated path that would get the people out on on the backside of the Piggly Wiggly. And again, that one of the questions that I've, you know, and Todd is working on this with the school district is, is that location going to be bussed? I know it's like a mile distance. Is that a location that we bust or will those kids walk to school? So, you know, I I think there's some. We need some answers yet, but I think there's some good things that have come out of this last, you know, in the last week here and the discussion with Cohen Esri has been very good.
Okay, so I think that was everybody with the exception of me. And I want to, I want to commend all of you as we've gone through this process. And this is what a board and how this is what a board is supposed to do and how it's supposed to function, that the board members give their opinions. Sometimes they're going to be out in the open. Sometimes, as Brian very eloquently stated, they have to be in closed session. And what are we protecting? Not ourselves, we're protecting the village. Not that we're trying to hide anything from anyone else. We're protecting the village and making sure that the village gets the best product that we can put on, especially when we're going to be using village tax dollars. Okay? I think the boardsman, board and Plan Commission were very consistent, as you heard, unanimous votes the whole way through this project as as we've gone through to get to, as we're closing in on the finish line, so to speak, within this. Tonight, another step, you know, the the public, that there was some outcry and upset people at the village board, several members specifically that were called out by an individual tonight that is hoping to be on the village board. And it scares me that that person would take bits and pieces of information and twist them. And that's very disappointing to me that that somebody would do that. And I hope that it's a lesson that can be learned for anybody who wants to go into public office, that it's a process that we all go through and we take care of our village. All of us have that at our heart. We wouldn't be doing this if we didn't. So I appreciate all that you guys have done. And for Phil, Dr. Random and Gary, the social media that you've had to experience in the last two weeks is unfounded, wrong, and just, I I can't, I I'll be like Brian right now and say, I can't speak the words I want to use right now because it's so upsetting to me because I know the good people that all of you are. And to state that you guys are against whatever for the minorities to, I mean, this this took off in all kinds of directions, folks, of that, you know, that you guys were, because you were all about safety, because that's what they heard was kids and that you talked about kids. Well, of course, there's going to be more kids in the zone and we want it to be safe. That's absolutely correct. And the speed limit there brought up 35 miles per hour goes through there right now. And right now, the way it was proposed is one left turn. All of these things are going to get worked out at the Plan Commission, but we're talking about, are we going to give dollars towards this? Does it make sense? And the interesting part is when we go into closed session, we all have to agree, at least four of us, before we come out on what we're going to propose, if we're going to propose anything. So if we don't have discussion to clarify our positions with one another, to say, hey, I can't support this if this isn't part of it. That's okay for us to say to one another, and some of those things have to be in closed session. So tonight, I hope that we never have a public comment that any board member is ever attacked again. And I I feel badly that I didn't cut it off. I should have cut that off, and that's my responsibility because you shouldn't have had to hear that. Granted, and everybody's entitled to their own opinion and we have free speech, but to come on and criticize a board member with very few facts or information of what truly was said because you have a partial, very disappointing. I'm also disappointed in the fact that we had a a technical error that was made and that person feels horribly. You can't even, the public can't appreciate how horribly that person felt since this occurred and still feels that way. But we had a resident of this community call in or actually, yeah, called in, I think it was called or texted in to let us know it was being broadcast. That's when it went down. And we had another member of the community that recorded it and put it on Facebook first thing and tried to make this a big issue and then twisted it. That can't happen in our community. We have to come together as a community to solve issues, not divide one another on issues. Very important. And I I just want to put the record out there. And I appreciate that Robert has his hand up that he wants to talk. I'm seeing that on the screen. He's not going to be given that opportunity during this. He had his opportunity and in my opinion, blew it completely. So with that said, I appreciate Brian, your your synopsis of the entire event as we went through this whole process. I appreciate that you put that out there and laid that out for the public. I see Roberta as part of the the participants out there. Roberta, I hope that you you direct people to see Brian's comments because it is exactly how this product project played out. And I'm excited to see the results when we come back with Cohen Esri. There's still some negotiation that may have to take place here. All right? And that's that's part of this process. But we, again, I'm going to reiterate this, we are on pace to get this done within Cohen Esri's timeframe. They've indicated that we're very aware of it. All right? And we're making sure that it's possible that it can happen. Okay, that said, there's no action that we need to take tonight. Is that correct, Ryan?
That is correct.
Correct. All right. That we've all had our comments and I think that's a good spot for us to stop this evening. I appreciate all of your candor and speaking to the public. Thank you, everybody. I need one more motion.
Who do you adjourn?
Second by Dr. Random, adjourned second by Gary Hertzberg. Kevin, even, do you have a comment or are you just saying goodbye?
I'm saying goodbye, sorry.
All right, that's okay. Caitlin, roll call vote, please.
Nyla Fry.
Yes.
Kristen Rungy.
Yes.
Phil Random.
Yes.
Chris Olner.
Yes.
Phil Willem's.
Yes.
Erin Moran.
Yes.
Gary Hertzberg.
Yes.
We are adjourned. Good night, everyone.
Alexa will be pleased with me tonight.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, Doug.